Hello, Mr. Potter. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. So we have the three select board members, myself, Chris Wild and Rick Parker. And you see Mark here, Bob James, the chair of the Board of Water Commissioners is also in the room. I don't know if you can see him on our panoramic zoom there. So do you have anything you want to say upfront, or should we just jump in?
We can just jump right in. I mean, it's basically, we would like to utilize that area of Church Street from Church and Bridge to Ferry Street. I believe that's the name of the road, right by that park that's right there, as a storage yard for pipe fittings, you know, equipment. I believe it's similar to what SPS did when they were working on the bridge over there a couple of years ago.
Yeah, so I mean, I'll just start out. I think a big difference from what's there now is the material stored on the grass on the ferry lane. I mean, that is a park that is owned and controlled by the Parking Rec Commission. And having not received permission from them to store anything there, I think, you know, we need to move that stuff off the grass.
Yes, to my knowledge, it was moved off the grass and onto the gravel area towards the river today.
That is 10 minutes ago.
No, there's, there's a lot of pipe and some heavy equipment and other materials.
Bales.
All right. I was under the impression that they were getting that moved today. I will make sure that it is done.
Butch talked, Manny, Butch talked to Manny today, and he said that he was gonna try to get it done. He didn't say he was gonna absolutely do it, but it's on his list to do, so. He was kind of thinking for tonight to see how it went. So if we block it off, he wants to use the road to put all that stuff in instead of, you know, off to the side. So. He's aware that we asked him to.
Sorry, Mark. Will there be enough room to get back and forth on the closed section of road if all the materials are stored in the road? Wait for your equipment. Just want to make sure there's enough room down there if you have the access to the road.
Yeah, if we're able to utilize that area, we'll be able to get in and out without going into the park with the equipment. You know, I'm sure that's an issue that is present. If we have that road closed down, we'll be able to put it horizontally across the road, go in with the loader, pick it up, move it, and so forth.
So if you do, so there's, there's parking, you know, some capacity to park on both sides of the road currently. And I'm thinking if you, if you stage pipe, is there gonna be along the, along the line of the road, or is it gonna be, you decided putting it across the road? I'm not, it's not clear to me. Is the pipe can actually stretch across the road, or is it going to be along in the direction of the road?
It could go either or.
So if, if I could say something, if that's the case, I guess, I think it would make sense to try to put it on the gravel parking area on the, on the ferry park side, so that if a vehicle backs, you know, so it's basically blocking vehicles going onto Ferry Park and tearing up the surface, damaging the surface of the park?
Yeah, we can.
Essentially setting it up as a guard, you know, not only to store it there, but as a guard to prevent traffic from going onto the park. Because people are gonna be moving vehicles around probably, and not everybody's gonna be super controlled.
Yeah, she'd like it on the edge of the road, right by that park, and then come in towards the park to pick it up and bring it out.
Parallel to the street travel.
Right, right, exactly, a parallel to the street, yeah.
Rick, I believe the foreman, when I talked to him, was suggesting that he wants to use some Jersey barriers on the end to block that off, so you don't even have to use the pipe to do that. They'll, they'll control the traffic with the Jersey barriers, signage.
Yeah, you're saying at the end, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't so concerned at the end. I was just trying to prevent traffic from, you know, people inadvertently driving onto Ferry Park and, and, and damaging the surface of, you know, because it, because that's under the control of a Parks and Racket, isn't even a select board property.
Rick, I was gonna ask Dee Felice if they could put a couple of Jersey barriers. You know where the trash barrel is down there? Where they were starting to put stuff in on, in onto the gravel area and in onto the grass area?
Is that near the sign or on the opposite end of the park?
You know where the flower garden is, towards the point other up top? If you guys put a couple of Jersey barriers along there, it keeps you guys from migrating over into the park too. You know, I don't know if that's easier. But we have some nice volunteers to take care of the park, so we want to make sure that we keep them happy.
Understood, understood. Yeah, I can, I can grab some more Jersey barrier and put it, you know, wherever you guys see fit. You know, we're, we're amenable to working with the town. We just would like to use this area. It makes it a lot easier as far as getting piped to and from, you know, installation process and everything like that.
And then on the, the drawing or the map that you submitted with your request, it shows a fence line running through the middle of, not the middle, but through the park. So that, that would need to be modified. And I'm not even sure if we need the fence or not. Mark and I were kind of talking about that earlier. What's your current thinking on that?
I, I just mimicked what SPS had on theirs. Just, I didn't know what the town was looking for, so I assumed that if that was approved in the past, that that was what you would currently want to do in place.
So SPS, their, their fence went along the road, along the gravel part. It wasn't in the middle of the.
Also, I think their fence was there probably to protect their property, because they probably had some things that could have been stolen. And, I mean, I don't know, everything that you're gonna have stored there, but certainly, most people aren't gonna be capable of picking up a 20-foot section of pipe and running off with it.
I'm quite sure who'd want to. Likeable.
So, so, yeah, I mean, do, does it, do we need a fence there? Does anybody feel, if you need a fence, that's one thing, but does, does the town need a fence there?
Well, I'm just wondering about liability. If there's no kids down there, but well, I guess there are kids. I mean, do we need to protect residents from, you know, going in there? I don't know. It's a question.
A lot of questions.
Yeah, all right. Do you want to ask?
Mike Dwyer on that one, and he said that he felt that signage and some Jersey barriers, the fence was only if Dee Felice wanted it. He, he went either way. He could go either way. So, and I'm the same way. Whatever, whatever works for you guys. I just want to give them a nice staging area so that they can proceed within, you know, a timely fashion. So that would be good. But, you know, the temporary fence, I don't know if they own it, if it's easy for them to do and they want to do it, that's up to them. But like, like Rick said, I don't think, you know, have to worry about somebody picking up a piece of pipe, walking away with it, a valve still four, 500 pounds too.
Yeah, my, my thought was that makes, it's like a limit of work, and so it's, it'll be easier for the workers down there to just eventually encroach on the grass area. But if there's a fence there, then they, they won't.
Right.
I would feel strongly about it. Chris, do you have an opinion on the fence?
I, I would almost prefer not to see the fence.
Okay.
I don't see the benefit of it other than if they have an issue with theft and liability, because you want to indemnify the town. We don't want to be responsible for that, which is a whole nother issue.
That's why I suggested when you put in those Jersey barriers along that parking area, so that they can't get the loader in there and they can't encroach in there. I mean, if, if you're thinking they're gonna migrate into it, that's why I was saying a couple extra Jersey barriers against that, to kind of keep them towards the.
Keep them a case within the roadway, yeah. I mean, I'd rather see park remain open. Fencing terminates that, because every time I go by there, this bicycle rider is sitting there relaxing and enjoying it. So I think it's kind of important to keep the park open, but the equipment off it.
Yeah, well, I think the fencing would just run along the closed off area.
It depends which plane you look at, right? The SPF?
Well, yeah, it would have to. We don't want fencing go through the middle of ferry lane. So I guess we'll leave it up to the contractor on that, Rick?
I'm, I'm good. I'm fine with that, yeah.
Dwyer's not concerned about town liabilities and.
Yeah, I, I did have one other question about sort of the limits of the area on the northeastern corner. And you see sort of a break in the angle as it, where it cuts off that, that entry to Church Street. You know, there's a little triangular part that's contained within the fence at the entry to Church Street. I'd like to see some of that not blocked off, because the parking area on the north side of that is, is used by people who are using the landing. And, you know, I, I guess I just want to make sure we leave enough space for people to continue to use the landing, to not be compromised at all in using the landing. You know, people, people go there to launch boats. They go there to, you know, to launch, you know, kines and kayaks and stuff, and also to fish.
So are you talking about the northern end or the pointy end?
Yeah, yeah, the pointy end, sort of the northeastern end. Well, you see there's a triangle paved area within, within the, you know, of, of unshaded, at least paved area that's within the fence bounds, as the way it's currently shown. And I'd like to see that not totally blocked off like that. In fact, you could almost just.
Just draw a straight line.
Yeah, just draw. So it's sort of like the line across would pretty much cut across the, the sea.
Yep.
And Church Street.
Are you following that?
I, I believe so. I'm just gonna pull it up on my phone just to double check.
Also, you can just provide your sense where, also, that's where you have to find that by right here to get out there to launch a rescue boat. They use that area, so they would want to keep that open.
Yeah, that's fine. It also gives people breaking distance.
Right, I mean, it's not really a very useful storage area anyway, because it's triangle shaped, but, but there is parking on the side and, and it's protected. And somebody who parks there can get back onto Bridge Street without a problem from that point, because there won't be through traffic. They don't have to worry about through traffic.
So to make it easier logistics-wise, there's a sign that says, "Welcome to West Newbury." How to be there.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna suggest, is have the Jersey barriers line up with that sign in the roadway that way. There's no obstructions to the boat ramp. There's still that parking area where they can fish and, you know, do whatever over there.
Okay, all right, good.
Got a lot. I, I understand immensely the need for the staging area, but I'm very disappointed to headed down there this past weekend and see the stuff already tossed out there without any requests. So I just, that sort of baffled the heck out of me. But with that said, to try and express the concerns now is difficult, because you might think some of them are unreasonable. But the first thing I would say, anytime you do something like this, you have to document it with photographs in advance, so that any defects or issues can be repaired at the end, back to the original condition. We don't have that yet, so I've taken a few photos.
Well, I think, Mark, did you say that the contractor did that?
They were supposed to do that, and I checked with Tatum Howard. They were supposed to video edges of the roads, the whole job site in Bridge Street, he told me, so that, you know, if any damage was done on the roadways, you know, somebody said they have a mailbox that was knocked over by them or whatever. They have their own proof, you know, it was already laying down or broken or whatever.
We need documentation, not them, because we have to be able to verify at the end.
My guys I sent out first thing yesterday morning, and that's what they did. They, they took and they videoed Church and Prospect for our records. So I don't know if Dee Felice has done it for theirs, but we have ours.
And the park area too?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the park area, because where all that pipe is now, I, I think there's gonna be damage.
Yeah, they, they videoed what they could. We, we weren't quick enough to get it before they put any stuff, you know, any material down there. But it was, you know, we can tell what damage they've done with the loader. I don't think they've done much. I mean, it's something a rake could take care of right now. I don't think anything's been damaged or anything. Maybe if you tie a tracks and Manny said that they can, he'd send somebody down to rake it out or whatever if you had to, so.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to address that right away, as soon as they move the pipe out, put the barriers up, so it's not, you know.
Yeah, actually, even if there's, you know, because who knows? You probably use some kind of blocking. I don't recall how the pipe is set up, but there's probably some kind of blocking and.
It's just on the ground.
It is just on the ground and not blocking at all. Okay. Okay, yeah, just be interested to see what it looks like. When it's removed, just to see, you know, you'd be able to identify if there is damage, because again, there is, you know, volunteers who take care of that, and we don't want to create work, more work for them or for the town.
Well, and suppose, and I think there is a potential for it, the roadway gets damaged. You're running fairly significant equipment over it with fairly heavy piping in tight circumstances. So again, that's gotta be documented too. And again, we're, we're behind on this because of the timeframe. I would have actually, if this was, was gonna be done a month down the road, expect to have a bond in place to secure any damages. I mean, other issues, I talked to Michelle, Concom. No fuel being stored or transferred from vehicle to vehicle, no fills or, I mean, it's in the 100-foot buffer zone. And I think whatever we come up, these conditions should be listed in it, so the Concom is a little bit more own.
So they do have an order of conditions, that's what's here.
Right, but as we know, there's no teeth in order of conditions, so that's why they're trying to have a zoning bylaw passed.
So that means you're gonna vote for it, because you realize there's no teeth, right?
If that was the only issue, I'd like.
Oh, wait, this is 2022. I mean, they're good for three years, but.
Well, that's another, another question I'm gonna have on this is, we know obviously what the start time is, was last week. What is the finish time? I think you need a definitive time schedules to when they're out of there.
It does say September in the letter, right?
Yeah, I believe it's, I said the end of September, if I remember correctly. No, this is construction. I can give you a tentative date, but with the weather and, you know, unforeseen conditions that arise, I can't be given an exact date.
Then you say September 30th, and that's at least this, you know, we're clean and done by then.
Yeah, I mean, tentatively, right now, I believe they're scheduled to be done mid-September. So I said to the end of September, just to have a little bit of a buffer, just in case we run into weather, you know, unforeseen conditions that may arise.
Okay, the letter says the middle of September, just so you're aware.
Oh, it does? All right, I, I couldn't recall.
Yeah.
Again, at, at the end of the process, everything has to be returned and restored to its original condition. Again, I think we also need some letter of indemnity, that the town is not responsible for any of this. And when they start storing on the town land or if it rolls into the river, we don't want to hear about it.
So was that in any of the documentation in the contract? I mean, it seems to me like that would be.
This is different, because it's got nothing to do with the roadway where they're putting the water pipe in. This is.
This is a staging area.
Yeah. Again, the contract skimmed it. We don't want to go into that.
That's a separate issue, but.
Yeah. And then Dwyer and Butch had conditions too. Which I think need to be incorporated to whatever we're going to decide.
Did you see these? Did you go by James or Jim?
Whatever you prefer. No, I didn't. He had conditions. I did not see those.
So our police and fire chief and the highway superintendent went out and looked at the site, and they had some conditions. They wanted signage to address all impacted areas. Pre-warning, road closures ahead and road closure signs at all impacted roads. Resident access only signs for Church Street. That would be up at the top of Church Street. Clear and obvious detour signs at all impacted areas. Traffic cones around all equipment parked on the side of the roadway or where the public has access. So that would be along Church Street and Prospect. Traffic control in place in areas where there's an open trench or other roadwork causing traffic to divert onto the opposite lane. So I will forward this to you, so that you have it. I mean, I, I would like to see some kind of letter response acknowledging, you know, our conversation tonight and these other things, just so we have it all together in one place. If that's something you, you could do.
That's not a problem. Yeah, the signs of saying, you know, road closed, you know, resident traffic only, tho, those are really typical of what, you know, we usually do. We'll go and, you know, doing work.
So I assume that you've talked to the conservation agent already? I know she's been down.
Michelle this morning.
Yeah, so the two things she highlighted for us is that stockpiles will be within the limit of work and outside the 100-foot buffer zone. I'm not sure if that will apply along the river there on ferry lane.
She said that's in the 100 foot. I talked to her.
Yeah, I just didn't see erosion control. Do you have silt socks up on the riverside of the road?
Near the storage yard or just along the project?
Yeah, storage area on ferry lane.
Not currently, but I can put some up.
And then the other requirement is no storage of gas, oil, or hazardous materials. I think anywhere in that, because you're within 100 feet of the.
Transferring from vehicles.
Right.
Like a fuel truck.
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to motion then?
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, regarding the fuel. How, you know, how do you plan to, obviously you have to fuel vehicles, how, because, and you won't be able to do it in that area, because it's, because it's right alongside the river. How, how would you accomplish that?
So if I'm understanding it correctly, on the plans, it shows like a buffer zone. We can't fuel in those areas, correct?
Yeah, but this, this staging area that we're talking about is within the buffer zone.
So when we fuel vehicles, we usually do it along, you know, the road. So if it's at the beginning of Church Street, that, that's without of the buffer zone. So we'll have a fuel truck come down and they'll fuel up the equipment there. So if going along Church Street, any of it's within that buffer zone, we can track the machine out of that buffer zone and have the fuel truck fuel up, you know, nowhere near the wetlands, you know.
Just in the middle of the road, or?
Typically, they, they do it, looks like a regular oil truck. The gentleman will come out and top off the machine right where it's sitting when they're working. That's what I did in the past, too. It's not, it's kind of standard practice for doing road construction and stuff like that. And, and I don't know how often they fill in. They're probably filling twice a week maybe. But the fuel truck could have a, built on, you know, they should have a spill kit somewhere on site too, speedy drive, stuff like that. In socks if they do have an issue. Most, most companies usually have that. Pretty handy. I don't know what Jim has or not, but I, I know typically fueling is done, you know, like he said, they can, they can walk a machine out of the buffer zone or something, fill it and put it back in service in short order without having to, you know, walk it from one end of Church Street to the other, that sort of thing, so.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that they're aware where all the wetlands are. I mean, there's quite an extensive section along Church Street. And then anything in the ferry lane area is within 200 feet of the river, so there can't be any fueling down there.
Jim, do you guys keep a spill kit in your tool truck? Do you have a?
I, yes, there's a spill kit in Manny's fuel truck.
That's what I, I, I wasn't 100% sure, but I know, you know, typically that, you know, he has some speedy dry socks, that sort of thing. In case there is a spill, it can be cleaned up without, you know, having an issue.
And I'm not 100% sure, but I believe the fuel company, company we use, they also have spill kits on their truck.
Yep. Those do. If we can check, that would be good, because we are right on the water there, and there are a lot of catch basins, so.
Understandable.
I'll make a motion then, that we approve authorizing the general contractor to store on the roadway surface based on the following conditions. Number one would be the six items enumerated by the police chief and Butch with signage and things like that. Number two would be no fuel storage or transfers in the area. I have written that one. You can have a later. No soils, fills, storage, or stockpiled in the area. The area will be restored to its original condition. That includes the roadway, any grass, signage, trees, or anything in the area. Jersey barriers will be used to secure the end. Fencing is at the GC's option. Anything stored there is stored at the general contractor's risk and no, no liability on the town. Time to complete and return to original condition is September 30th. There will be socks installed at Ferry Park along the riverside, and vehicles and materials will be not stored on the grass. That's what I've got.
That's it?
Okay, and, and as far as defining the, this, that area on the end of, you know, the northeastern corner.
To bring the Jersey barriers in so that they run parallel with the welcome to West Newbury.
We're supporting, okay. And I don't recall exactly where that sign is, but it sounds like you do.
I don't care.
Oh.
They're gonna get you a couple of pockets.
All right. One second.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Jim, if, I'll send you a motion, and if you could just send a letter acknowledging receipt, and then you will, will add by it. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate you guys taking the time and letting us use this area.
Sure, thank you. Give a look at the project.
You do. Have a nice night, guys.
Good night. Bye-bye.
All right, did you, we did have a second item on here for contract questions, if you guys wanted to talk about the meeting or?
Would just like to hear what Rick saw when he was.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we.
I didn't go with him.
Oh, you didn't? Okay.
Yeah. I chose not to.
Yeah, and by the way, I didn't mean to blow you off. It just that there was, there was a conversation going on, and I had to get, you know.
That's good.
Yeah, I wanted to hear what was going on, so. Yeah, so, you know, we addressed, or not we addressed, but topics such as crossing over culverts, you know, around catch basins and over culverts. Butch made it clear at the outset. It started out with a little bit of a bang, where Butch basically said, you know, you told me on last time we met that you might have to tear out a catch basin and things, you know, certain other things. You're not messing with our infrastructure, period. So that was good. That sort of laid, that laid base. And, and then from there, you know, we walked the entire length of the line, and, and there was discussion regarding, you know, of how, how to address each, each culvert, each, each catch basin as we passed it, and, and agreement on this, on how each one would be done. That wasn't documented in, in writing, but it was, everybody was in the conversation. I think it was pretty well understood what was gonna be.
Yeah, it was painted on the, painted on the asphalt, Rick, so yeah.
I guess, because it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't in writing, but it was in, in paint on the asphalt in, in most cases. And then there was, there was.
Was that the meeting?
Oh, yeah, so, sorry, yeah, so Butch, obviously Mark, Bob, Jim, that was just on the phone with us. Manny, who was, I think the fourth person on site, two people from Tatum Howard, Steve, I don't recall Steve's last name, whose name I also don't recall.
Kyle was the, the engineer.
Yeah, Kyle was gonna be the onsite engineer over the course of the project. I walked back with him. We talked a little bit on the way back, just, you know, more casual, but you, you know, sort of understanding where everybody stood.
And Mark, does, Tatum Howard must have a copy of the order of conditions, right, from the Conservation Commission?
Yep, yep, they, they received that this morning, yesterday, something like that, but Michelle said that they should have it. If not, I have it and I'll get it to them, but I know they should have it. They have a file of everything else, so we'll make sure it's in it.
So there was also discussion about, there were probably five different trees. Two or, I think, three of them were already marked and scheduled to be removed.
On Church.
Yeah, on, on Church, yeah. No, we didn't, we didn't go on Prospect at all. We just did Church Street. And that took two hours, you know, so that wasn't, we weren't gonna go farther field than that. So there were, I think it was three trees that were already marked on, on, on Church Street that clearly need to be removed anyway.
Yeah, ash trees, we're saving money on that, right?
Two, two, two of them, well, actually, it was supposed to be, the, Butch had the tree guys hopefully coming in today to do the removal work that they have to.
Tomorrow morning at eight.
Right, yeah, today, not Thursday. I'm sorry, it's Thursday, yeah, tomorrow, Thursday. And then there was. There was, there were one or two other smaller trees which wouldn't. Well, if I recall correctly, wouldn't fall into the shade tree act. I think there's a, it's either ten inch or twelve inch DBH. Do you recall?
It's ten.
So, so. They were smaller, they were either one or two smaller. Then there was one larger tree. It was actually a tri-trunk or maybe even four trunks on the tree. Where one of them was clearly going to create a problem because it was at an angle and would be a problem. I suggested to Butch that he talked with Sue Brown. I, I, and I'm guessing he probably did, but I have no idea with the.
God, I always think trees was marked with the yellow tape tonight and I came up that way.
Okay, okay.
I was hoping somebody to talk to somebody.
Yeah, so it'll be a little bit before they get down to that. And I don't know if they're going to have to have a hearing or not for that, but. So trying to do it legitimately, but it was a tree that, quite honestly. There are some trees there that, or there was one tree in particular. Was it that? It was that tree. It's already on the edge of a steep bank. And the trunk that's there. The, the, if they don't remove that trunk, the tree is going to fail anyway. Once, once they start digging near the tree. Because the other side is on a steep bank, so there's no root or there's limited retention on the other side. There's the roots on one side, but that side's going to get cut when they, when they trench. And so now the tree is going to have roots going parallel to the road, but nothing transverse to the road and. It's inevitable. It's going to fall one way or the other at some point, but so that, that trunk. Is a significant counter or balancing issue right now where. You know, if, if its roots are gone, the tree is going to tip over if that trunk's there anyway, I think. Not immediately, but you know, first big wind in really wet conditions, it would be gone. So they'll, you know, they'll resolve that, but in any event, it needs to, in order for them to get a, the excavator through, it needs to go. And then there was some other. You know, a bunch of miscellaneous trimming limbs, you know.
They have some limbs that need to be trimmed out, so.
And then there was also talk about, of course, this is really. The water department contract issue. There was discussion of paving and thickness of paving and. You know, Butch wants six inches. Of pavement when all said and done, including the binder coat and the top coat. And they were not, DeFaleese was not imagining that much, but also based on slight. You know, where, where the, where the piping will actually run at this point, where the trenching will actually run at this point, doesn't cut the pavement as much as possible. So Steve. From Tatum Howard was talking about. A, changing the provision for paving in the contract from a square footage to a tonnage, I think. Yeah, so he was, and that seemed like everybody was amenable with that. So even though. Thickness has been added to what had been agreed upon. I think in the contract it said four inches and Butch was looking for six inches, so.
Butch wanted that distinct pavement that's there. So if it's six and a half inches, we put six and a half back. If it's eight foot eight, so.
But Steve thought it was washed once, once we considered tonnage as opposed to, you know, square feet and thickness.
Yeah, because the water church street is way off the street entirely.
Right, right.
It wouldn't be any issue, right, so.
Yeah, so are they going to do a similar walk on Prospect or is that already been done, Mark?
Prospect's mostly in the road, so it's not going to be as bad. Have to do the test pitch where they cross the culverts there too, but. We're pretty positive we're going under them. They're pretty deep.
Okay, yeah, there's just that one wetland area. I saw they put the silt socks up already. Bottom, yeah.
Yeah, so it's just sort of one anecdote note that, you know, it's water under the bridge at this point because there's a contract signed and things are rolling, but. You know, we talked in the walk back up about, or, you know, talking with Mark and, and with Bob where. I hadn't occurred to me beforehand that they're not actually replacing, they're not removing the existing pipe. They're instead putting new, new pipe in on the other side of the road. And, and. You know, I'm not sure where that decision was made. I think it was between Mike and Tatum Howard or something. Expect to be is that not having been best decision because probably could reduce costs. By, by excavating where it had already been excavated. You know, there's, we already know that there's existing pipe.
Is it AC pipe though?
Sum is, that was, that was what scared Mike was the AC pipe.
He thinks why, okay, all right.
Leave it be.
Otherwise, then you have the disposal of it.
Okay, that makes sense. I didn't, I didn't realize that was the case, okay?
I, I don't know.
No, it, no, that could be. I mean, it is somewhere on, I saw a piping. Plan once that it showed where the asbestos pipe was in town and maybe.
Three or four streets, yeah, Green Street has. I don't think anybody's really sure what's on Church Street, to be perfectly honest with you. I mean, it could be Jack Bellin, no, it could be Cass. But no one was really sure, so.
Yeah, okay, well, it's an aside anyway, because it's at this point, yeah, we're already, we're already moved into this contract, so. But yeah, that was.
Did you have questions on the contract you wanted to raise or?
No, but I do want to make a comment. I mean, I asked at the last meeting, I said, do they have the right to put it? In this area and Angus said. Exploded on the time, huh?
The right to put what?
The storage down at Ferry Park. Angus got upset with me and said, you think I've had time to read the contract?
Oh, you didn't, is it in the contract?
Yeah.
Did you look?
It is not, so that's why we have the meeting tonight. Otherwise it'd be irrelevant, right? They have the right.
Well, I think there was some asked board.
Either way, my point is, so if Angus didn't read the contract, who did? Was it our procurement officer, the water department, the contractor? I mean. You can't have contracts just handed and going. Somebody's got to be reading them and reviewing. So.
Wait one, good.
Are you looking for the select board meeting or?
I mean.
Which meeting are you looking for?
The. Wetlands, I mean, the wetlands, no. My mind isn't functioning too good. The taxes, yeah, assessors office.
That was this morning.
Does that date tonight?
No, it's eight thirty.
Eight thirty to eleven thirty this morning, whatever. I, I was there.
You gotta be kidding me.
No, but people got their point across.
That's terrible. Yeah, they, they really screwed up on me.
It was about a dozen people who felt the same way.
Well, this, this was worse because not only did it increase the appraisal value, they, they praised me twice. Once one quarter and once the next quarter, sixteen percent, sixteen percent, thirty percent. And I gave somebody this thing here. Down the collect office, they're supposed to give it to the assessors, you know, committee, and they're supposed to get, nobody ever getting back to me. But that's why I was going to the meeting at eight thirty. I got here really so I can be in the front seat.
It was a select one. We're just wrapping up about water pipe issues of.
Ah, shit.
If you want to get bored today, you can sit here a little longer.
No, no.
You can get the front seat though.
I mean, I don't want the seat. I just want some, some results.
Have you tried calling the assessors office?
I went to the assessor's office.
Yeah.
He said, I'm just doing my job. That was.
All right.
The worst part of all of that, the original assessor, you know, once in a while, she went to my house, said, okay, everything's great. You're grateful it shouldn't go up. Then this new hatchet guy get in here and they hired him to put everybody's assessment value up. So, okay, so he raised it sixteen percent. Okay, next month, next quarter, another sixteen percent. Okay. So thirty-two percent is kind of hard to swallow.
To file for an abatement and you.
I shouldn't have to follow.
This, this way told everybody at the meeting this morning and.
Is that right?
The problem is that the timeframe for this year has already passed. So people who didn't know they could do this, it was a mess. I was going to talk to him personally. I think it's your best option at this point.
I did, but he, all he said was, I'm just doing my job. You're not going to raise your taxes. I'll just raise the abatements. I'll take care of it. Any chance that one of you people know anybody on the board?
What, what's your name?
Ronald Smith.
Okay, and what's your add-in?
You pass this to him and make sure it gets to them.
They are, they are a separate elected board to the board of assessors.
Control over them, but I'll, I'll make sure.
Yeah, you know, it just, I mean, you know, bad happens if they raise it sixteen percent, but when they do it two months, two quarters in a row, it's.
Just means your house is nicer than they got.
No, no, no. The other assessor said I wasn't going to go up.
Why she left town?
This was, this was a few years ago. She went to my basement and to my old house. The outside, she said, oh no, don't worry about it, not going up. And it goes up thirty-two percent.
Sorry to hear that.
What they're trying to do is chase all the seniors out of the town. You get all the youngies too, yeah. That's what the money is. Thank you.
So your question is who's reading the contract? I assume you guys are reading it or is that?
Where we left off.
It's like somebody remembered.
Me, Tatum Howard, I guess that's their, I mean, they're the engineer for this project.
Yeah.
Theoretically, somebody should be reading it.
I agree, yeah. So I don't know, I mean, Jenny signed it, but I don't know that she read it.
I don't think she reads.
So it's maybe Caitlin?
I don't know, but.
Yeah.
That's the question.
I think it's a policy. Any contract that the town is executing, we got a lot of coming up, purchases and projects and. I think there should be a process. We used to, I used to work, we have a check off sheet of who's written what, legal counsel did or. The whole process. And by the way, when you get a contract. Just because it says something and if it's not to your benefit, you can modify it. Most people are afraid to change anything. So if people do start reading them, don't have to be shy about crossing out, making modifications and sending it back.
Anything else?
Not for me.
All right.
We don't have the ability to talk about the board of assessors meeting as soon as.
Did I, I don't think I added, should we put it on the agenda for next? For our next meeting?
I think it merits conversation.
Yeah, there wasn't anything on the agenda about unforeseen.
Right, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. All right, can the motion be adjourned?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.